Good evening, welcome to the Town of Mashpee Board of Selectment Meeting, November 13th, 2017. If you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you share with us a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives protecting our rights and freedoms? Any public comment? Nothing. Okay. I need a motion on the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meetings of Monday, October 30th, 2017.
Second.
Okay. I have a roll call on that also, please.
Yes.
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 All right. We have the review and approval of various applications. We have an application from the Boys and Girls Club.
I make a motion to approve the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod for their beer and wine and food tasting November 16th and assign them.
Second.
Okay. And again, a roll call on that too, please.
Yes.
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 We have a request for a letter of support for the Atlantic Herring Fisheries and Management Plant Amendment from the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance.
Make a motion that we sign a letter proposed to us by the Fishermen's Alliance. We talked about this at the Association meeting. You all were at the press one.
I second it.
Second. Okay. A roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay. And we have a -- Brian, are you ready to go so pretty quick?
Anytime you are.
Do you want to go with it? This is a water quality presentation. Dr. Brian Howes, the University of Massachusetts, and let you introduce yourself.
All righty. Hi, Don McDonald. I'm on the Waterways Commission, and part of our responsibility is overseeing this water quality management project. And just for those of you who may not be aware of what it is, this has been an ongoing collaborative effort. It's grown to be one of the most successful programs in the region. This is a sound assessment of the present health of our bays. This program was successful once again. We've used volunteer sampling efforts, and the high-quality data has been able -- the cost has been able to be managed by successfully using volunteer programs as well as also using the Department of Natural Resources now as well. There's two parts to the program. One is to sustain a continuing assessment of nutrient-related water quality in the Waukou and Pompanas Bay estuaries relative to the regulatory standards. And the other is to monitor improvements in water quality that result from the restoration efforts such as the oyster propagation, dredging, and wastewater treatment undertaken by the town, the tribe, and others. In order to develop this program, the Water Quality Consortium was developed in 2009 between the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, the Town of Mashpee, and the Coastal Systems Program within the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. That's the School of Marine Science and Technology referred to as S-MAST on most of the slides. The Mashpee Waterways Commission has been responsible for the overall Phase Two of this program. It's the organization and support with the assistance from the tribe's natural resources staff under Chuckie Green and Casey Thornborough, Rick York and his team, as well as the UMass-Dartmouth with Brian Howes and his team. The structure of the program relies on there's four specific tide early morning days. There's six o'clock, and you'll see 24 volunteers in about eight boats going to 35 different sites to accurately capture samples. There's a responsibility to maintain the custodial value of these samples to get them to the university in a timely fashion for testing. And that's the piece now that Brian's going to speak to, so.
Brian?
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Don coordinates the program personally, and he's going to be taking my job pretty soon if he keeps up like that. I'm going to try to give a brief overview of the last year, but really the last several years, and where the system is going. But I also want to say that we sent out -- I don't know what happened. It may have been a glitch in the computer, but we did send out reports to the town that were full reports. If you've got a report that's not like 45 pages, then there's something wrong with what happened. It's already been resent, okay? But if it happens again, just please, somebody contact me, and I'll deliver you discs, you know, the old days. I still remember discs. Okay. Thank you for having me tonight. It's nice to be able to showcase all the hard work that the people in Mashpee and actually Barnstable and Falmouth have contributed to this as well, their time and energy, which also means they're funding for their boats and their gas and all of that as well, so. All right. The major issue, as you know, in Mashpee's waters is really nitrogen overloading the estuaries and wholesale decline in the estuarine habitats. And this has been tracked back to changing land use. So it used to be pine oak forest-type system. Went to actually go back to when -- I don't personally go back to when, but it wasn't that long ago that Mashpee, Pompanas Bay Island was a nice little campground with just trees on it, no houses. And we all know what sort of has happened now to the town. That's good in many ways. People need a place to go, play, stay, but it has its associated negative effects. And that's what we're trying to get a handle on and figure out what to do. Sewer Commission is working this problem as well. The Mashpee Management Plan, Nutrient Management Plan is also working this problem. It's all based on this. All of this data feeds into all of those other programs. Well, Mashpee's estuaries project did Mashpee's estuaries, and the town was an early partner in that project as well, got out in front as the assessments were done years ago. TMDL's been written way down the road and that, but sadly, what was found in that was that the upper regions of each estuary, meaning the inland most regions of those, both estuaries, Pompanas Bay and Waukou, are showing very significant water quality decline, habitat decline, loss of eelgrass, macroalgae accumulations, and actually sometimes fish kills and low oxygen events. So it's just a really heavily impacted both systems, Pompanas Bay to a lesser extent, Waukou Bay. Language here just stresses the fact, and these are from the reports, Pompanas is severely nutrient overload. It's one of the most impacted estuaries on Cape Cod, okay? It's also, I think, one of more attractive estuaries on Cape Cod, but it needs some more. Waukou Bay is equally nutrient overloaded. Both systems have macroalgae accumulations, which is floating drift algae that wash up on the beach, but when they're in the bay itself, they smother the bottom and they kill the animals. And unfortunately, the animals on the bottom are what provide the food for fish. And also, then the birds eat the fish, and so we start losing our bird populations. It's just a whole cascade of negative effects. And how do we restore them? Well, the town's been working this, again, one of the first towns really start focusing on this problem in the region. And there's only really one way to manage nitrogen enrichment is to manage the nitrogen, but there's three different ways you can do it. You can increase the tidal exchange, which early days in Mashpee, Mashpee went out and said, "We have a problem with our tidal inlet in Pompanas Bay." They were the first times to set up a revolving fund for dredging of that inlet to Pompanas Bay. And that, doing that maintains maximum flushing in that system, so you're not going through -- as it restricts, it crashes, and then you open it and things get better and it crashes. At least you're maintaining things as good as they can be in Pompanas. Without that, we would be in really big trouble. The other thing is, is we can try to implement things that remove nitrogen during transport, or some things have been going on in that, and also not just in transport. In the estuary, we're already in Mashpee working on shellfish, but also there's been some pond creation that also removes nutrients. And finally, you can control the watershed nitrogen sources, which unfortunately is really the expensive thing, and that's really what the sewer commission is working on now. The town has been sort of out in front in trying a whole myriad of things to remove nitrogen without having resort to sewers. But unfortunately, the shape of this watershed going all the way up to Sandwich just brings all of those nutrients down, dumps them in Pompanas that are all the way down, and dumps them in Waukou, and there's going to have to be some soaring to get full restoration of these systems. Our job is to figure out how to minimize that. Water Quality Monitoring Program itself, as Don said, is a collaborative program with three different groups. Half the funding comes from the tribe, and half the funding comes from the town. So in addition to everything else, it's a true partnership that way. And also, we provide at the university volunteers as well, and boats, to the project, which has a cost associated. So the goals of the program are to determine the present status of water quality in each estuary. And this is specifically to support planning efforts that are going on. We also want to track short and long-term changes in abeyment health. You'll see some of that tonight. But also, we want to get validation of these nitrogen management strategies that the town is implementing. They've already implemented them. They've already implemented the maintenance of the inlet. We're implementing some of the oyster input, and some of these other ecological things are also going on. So we're shifting into not just looking to see what's there, but seeing if our fixes are working. We look at the standard water quality measurements. I'm not going to get into this in any detail. I'm going to say that we do the whole suite of measurements required to evaluate water quality in these systems, and stratification, blooms, phytoplankton blooms, things like that. Problem right now is that if nitrogen -- and this is specific to the Town of Mashpee, nitrogen enrichment continues in this town without any alteration, even if we slow it down. If it continues further, we're going to see more and more frequent phytoplankton blooms such as we had last summer. We're seeing more oxygen depletion. We'll see it going more anoxic or hypoxic, no, it's less oxygen, and it will become more frequent. We already have macroalgae accumulations in both Waukou and Pompanas severe ones, but it's in specific areas, and those areas will get bigger and bigger, as it's already happening in some of these, and we're going to just see more and more loss of habitat. So it's not a question of nitrogen's good or bad. What we're really after is the fish, shellfish, eelgrass, clear water for swimming, things like that. So if you want to go to the beach, you want to be able to see your toes if you're in foot of water, it'll be nice. So this is also human-type stuff, what we want, and we want tourists and also our citizens to enjoy the resource as well. So we restore the environment, we also restore that human utilization of the environment. And we are getting -- going to get worse. These are just cartoons. You've seen them before. The left one is a nitrogen map of Pompanas Bay based on real data. And blue is low nitrogen, green is fairly high, red is really high. What you can see is present levels on the left, and if we go to build out without doing anything else to control nutrients, it's going to look like the one on the right, which is as bad as parts of the system are now, they're going to get a lot worse, especially in the tributary systems like Mashpee River, Shoestring Bay, and Aquay Bay. And Aquay Bay, by the way, right now, when you go out there in the summer, if you go in the upper half of that estuary, you go down to the bottom and you look at the bottom, there are no animals living there in the summer. It's a totally -- they're all been killed. Every summer, they're all killed off. So we've lost that habitat. Now, they do come back in the fall, and if we can get them through the summer, the next summer, then we're back on the road to recovery. But right now, the conditions are so bad that we extinguish that population, and it is of no real resource value to the ecosystem, but also to people wanting to fish and things like that.
Can you just clarify, what do you mean by build-out timeframe?
Build-out is --
What's the timeframe for that?
No. Well, that's the one thing we can't tell. But it works like this, that you look at what existing zoning is now. And we work with a town planner here at Tomford Ella. He says, "What's existing zoning? What do you think is going to be built out of existing zoning? What is developable land that hasn't been developed?" And just because it is developable, a lot of that is known in the various towns on the Cape. Well, the planning office knows that's not really going to be developed that way because of these restrictions put on. So it's actually a little less than what you could maximally do on paper. It's more realistically what could happen. But that is the putting homes or commercial structures on existing land that's open that can go into development and will likely go into development sometime. When would that be? Well, we would have had a different view 10 years ago of when that would have been because development over the last 10, eight years has been very slow. So now it's picking up again, and so I can't tell you exactly when, but it goes with the economy how long it'll take. But you know, it's 20-plus years.
Okay. That's helpful. Just thank you.
All right. And this, just to try to give you an idea, this is Waukou Bay a number of years ago, probably about eight years ago. The brown area you see on the bay between the land and the boats is macroalgae that's floated up off the bottom and drifted ashore. And all of that was sitting on the bottom out in the bay, and there was an extreme meteorological event that allowed it to float to the surface. Everybody went nuts saying, "Oh, my God, we have to do something to save the bay." But the problem is, that's been sitting out there for 20 years prior to this, so 30, the last 30 years, and it was only -- became apparent. The bay is already severely impacted by accumulation, sometimes up to two feet thick that accumulate on the bottom and smother the bottom. So these are real problems that are out there, and it's going to take in Waukou, it's going to take a lot of work to bring them all back. Fortunately, the part of Waukou that Mashpee owns, it will take a lot less because we were focused on Yehu Pond, Hamlet Pond, and Quashnet. And that part of Waukou actually is in much better shape than the main basin, believe it or not, of Waukou. The other thing we had last summer, I mean, I'm not going to say unique, but fairly unique. It's only been really seen in the region, in this side of Cape Cod for a few years now. We had a big bloom of rust tide, which is called, it's Cochlodinium is the genus, but it's a nuisance algae. It's associated in some cases with the death of shellfish, actually. In this case, there were no records where there was any death of shellfish. We're lucky not all blooms caused that. This is a monster bloom. I mean, if you look at the one on the right, that's from Nantucket. The one on the left is from Three Bays, the pictures. It's just, you look at the water and it's impenetrable. I mean, it's right to the surface, and it's opaque, and it's brown, or brownish-orange. And this is new in this region, and we don't know if this is due to increasing nutrient loading into these estuaries, and this is going to become a common thing, or whether this is a one-off because of the unique meteorological circumstance, which I'll tell you about in a minute. It's one of the things that we -- these are the things we've been worried about for a while, when I said, "What happens if we don't do anything? Will you get more and bigger blooms?" That's what I mean. All right. This is really nothing more than to just repeat what Don said. We have all these stations laid out and all these dates laid out that we occupy in both, both estuaries, eight boats, 35 stations. They're all occupied within a two-hour or so period because it gives you a snapshot of the bay. It's like you're getting this instantaneous sample of what the whole bays look like, and that allows us to do less sampling. So we don't have to do six times a year, eight times a year. If we do it this way, we can do less a year again, saving money and getting the same quality of data. The other thing, and one of the things that makes this program so good, is that we have an unbelievably high data capture. Especially for the nutrient part, we're getting virtually 100% of what we plan on doing actually gets done at the end. It's very difficult when you have so many boats, you have weather, you have equipment failures. This program has done this year after year now, and it's just, it's a model program for the region right now. I know no other program has that rate of data capture, which is really good. Put this in, data slide, just to give you a feel for -- people will say, "Well, you know, what if, where is all this stuff coming from?" We know that the nitrogen increasing, nitrogen in the bays increases phytoplankton, but what we also have found out is that the organic matter in the bays, and that's what this shows, the fact that there's a one-to-one relationship between the amount of chlorophyll and the amount, what the organic particulates are. It means that there's no washing in of nutrients. There's no magic thing of, "Well, you know, it's stormwater runoff that's causing this organic matter loading." This says definitively that the loading to this system, nitrogen goes in, and that's what's causing the phytoplankton. There's not anything else. If this was the Mississippi Delta, or the Danube, or some other places, that wouldn't be the case. But in this case, it means that we have a problem, which is nitrogen causes phytoplankton or macroalgae. That's the problem. The good news is, it means that we can fix it easier. We don't have to go getting rid of land erosion. All right. This just shows the distribution in Waukou. We basically do a whole picture of Waukou. The reason we do so many stations is because it gives us good data understanding of all these little ponds and subestuaries and drowned river valleys that go throughout the system. You can't just go out in the middle of Waukou and take a sample and say, "This is what Waukou is," because there's Yell River, there's Charles River, there's Quashnet River, there's Yehu Pond, Great River, Little River, Hamlet Pond, and even more than that. So we actually make sure that we capture all of that. The one problem that we had in the last time I met with you was that we were worried about what was going on in the Quashnet River. This is a salinity graph. You can see that the salinities of Quashnet are significantly lower than salinities elsewhere throughout the entire Waukou Bay system. We were worried that that was due to some tidal restriction around the Quashnet River Bridge, but it's not, as it ends up, because subsequent to this, Town of Falmouth, Mashpee, the Citizens for Protection of Waukou Bay worked with us, and we went, we surveyed all this. We did find that potentially some dredging at the inlet of Quashnet might help a little bit, but other than that, there were no clogs. The bridge, when it went in, was properly engineered. The flow through that is as it should be. The nitrogen levels throughout the system, and all the graphs will sort of look like that, there'll be four data graphs for each estuary, that's it. The take-home message here is the red bars represent the TMDL, or the threshold level that we're shooting for, for restoration of these systems. And as you can see, it's those horizontal lines, that's .38 is to restore eelgrass, and .5 is to restore betta gambals alone, without eelgrass. And what you see is every bar on the bar graph goes over those red lines, which are the regulatory thresholds now. So the further something's above the red line, the more nitrogen has to be removed to get it below the red line. I look at these different. I look at them as the higher it's above the red line, the more it's going to cost us, and the more work it's going to be to get it restored. These are fairly well and heavily impacted. As you can see, Charles River is way above the line. Yell River, the upper parts above the line. Quashnet River is just swamped with nitrogen. But you start coming down into Yehu, Hamlet, and Main Waukou Bay, and you start getting a little bit more unreasonable in terms of what you could restore. If we can get any of this below .5, we'll be a long way ahead of where we are now. Doesn't even, if it doesn't even hit the TMDL threshold, it still will be a vast improvement over what it is now, which that .5 line is the middle red line. Chlorophyll, just to give you a feel what happened last summer. If you look out here, the green bars, by accident, okay, I could claim credit for it, but the green bars are 2016 phytoplankton pigments. This is a metric for biomass of phytoplankton, and this is that huge bloom. And as you can see in Waukou, it went really throughout virtually the whole bay. Virtually every 2016 is higher than all of the other bars at that station. So that this station here, the last summer's twice, twice the amount or more than it was in previous years. It was a massive bloom, and it had negative effects on the whole system. And it wasn't just confined to these two bays. Okay? It was, it occurred throughout in other places in the region, not throughout everywhere. Three Bays had a particularly good bloom. Oxygen levels, then, these are minimum this summer, or some of the minimum this summer. This represents the water quality classification of SA waters, which Waukou is. This red line represents the stress level, and as you can see, virtually all the bars are below the red line, and that's bad because it means they have less oxygen in them than they should have. All of them below the SA line. But the interesting thing is, last summer with that big bloom, looking Yehu Pond, oxygen levels dropped to a level we hadn't seen before. And that means seen before all the way back to our long-term records, which go back pre-2010. So this is a long time. This is a decadal bad year. Yeah.
So on your last slide, is there any chance that the testing, or I'm assuming the testing has been exactly the same, same lab, same procedures?
Yeah, the beauty of this program is, is that everything's the same.
Okay.
And everybody's trained every year as well. Even if they know how to do it, they're still retrained every year so that this data can go through whatever regulatory process.
I assumed I just figured out.
No, no, it's good. It's one of, not all programs are like that.
Okay.
What's the classification, SA being?
It just means the highest quality marine waters.
Would that be the equivalent of our own side water?
Joe, if you're going to have to get up to the microphone, or why don't you hold off?
You can ask me. I'll repeat the question.
The indication, water quality classification, SA. What is comparable to that? Sound for example?
Okay. What is SA water quality, and what's an example?
You should be repeating.
I'm repeating it for him.
So what's an example of SA waters? Yeah, Nantucket Sound, Vineyard Sound, but also some of the other estuaries, parts of Pompanas.
Pleasant Bay.
Even areas in larger basins, like just down near the tidal inlet, in the bay, but just inside the tidal inlet, not for these two, but for Born's Pond, Lower Born's Pond, it's like that. There are estuaries around that aren't SA waters. There's very few that really sustain DO like this year round. Part of the problem that's going on is people are now looking and finding out that some of these classifications are a little rigorous. But our problem is, the nutrient values are specific to these bays, and the thresholds are specific to these bays. And nobody can argue that these bays are in good shape, okay? That's the nice thing, is you can go see it, except I wish we couldn't see it.
As a former regulator, let me try. SA waters support all uses that you'd expect: swimming, boating, fishing, human contact, and habitat. SB waters, things like Boston Harbor beaches, limited, you know, safe for human health, but limited and diminished ecological value. So most waters are classified as A. Almost none of them meet them because we've screwed it up, and C is failing. So the goal is to have our waters meeting all of their natural resource value uses and be safe for swimming, boating, and fishing all the time.
Thanks, Sam. Okay. So in any case, then, we can take all of the data that we have, all the different metrics, the nitrogen, inorganic nitrogen, organic nitrogen, the chlorophyll, the oxygen, light penetration into the bay, which is required for eelgrass, habitat, a positive habitat. We can take all of those, and we can integrate them together into an estuarine quality index. It's just, it's a quick way, you can just look at it, you get a feel for how things are. Are they good? Are they sort of okay? Are they bad? And it's a quick check, but it's a lot easier to understand than to balance in your head four or five different metrics and balance it out. It's been used for a long time. It was developed in the 90s for this region. What you can see, though, is poor water quality here, and that's poor water quality relative to all other estuaries in the region, okay? You have, Quashnet River has traditionally been the left-hand side, arrow pointing up is the left-hand one, is the long-term average. The right-hand one is just 2016. Quashnet was bad in 16, but it's always bad, very high nitrogen, low oxygen, poor visibility. But you come down through here, and you start seeing the effect of the bloom last year, in that the left one is, in this case, is moderate water quality. The right one is starting to go to poor. The left one is high water quality. It's going to poor in 16, high, less good, to moderate, and like that. less good, to moderate, and like that. And that's a direct outgrowth of that bloom, which is one of the reasons we've been really afraid of increased frequency and extent of blooms in this region now. For the last decade, we've been looking at that. And actually, the species that is that bloom, we're studying under Sea Grant grant for this region. Jeff Turner's the PI with myself. We're trying to understand why. And are we gonna, can we count on this next year? And I hope not. Okay. And as you see, the problem when you start getting blooms and things is the poor water quality zone is moving down the system. It's getting closer to the inlets, which those are the high-quality areas. All right, so, over a long time, taking all of the data that we have from 2001 to present, what we have is we're able to calculate that index for everything. We plot everything versus the long-term. This is the long-term average. All the new stuff, and we now have enough data finally to be able to look at trends. We can do three-year batches, two- and three-year batches. And what we see is there's been a tendency in Wacoit for the poorest quality areas to slowly be improving. So, they're actually getting better. This is long-term. This isn't just 2016. That's 2016. But, it's, there is a tendency now, a trend, clear trend, statistical trend of them improving over the long term. When you get into the moderate, this is moderate impairment in here. It's not horrible. It's moderate impairment. You're just getting sort of a mix. But, if you look at this carefully, what you'll see is there's a tendency that the good areas, and this is a good area, might be getting slightly worse. So, it's kind of weird in that the poor areas are getting slightly better, the good areas might be getting slightly worse, or at least they're just highly variable. It's different for Poppinassit. This is Poppinassit. Again, 18 stations in, estuarine stations in Wacoit, 16 in Poppy. That's our offshore station out here. It's not really in that exact spot. Okay. Poppinassit Bay, Poppinassit Bay has more uniform salinities, but as you can see, Mashpee River, of course, being the major tidal river in the town, discharging a lot of the town's freshwater into the estuary, knocks down the headwater salinity in the Mashpee River. And actually, these lower salinities in the Mashpee River also help with oyster aquaculture in that system because it knocks down predators. So, there's, and also, the freshwater indicates how much land load is coming in as a metric, just as a rule of thumb. And it also is, tells you why we put oysters in the Mashpee River, because we can intercept that nitrogen coming in the river by the oysters before they hit the bay. It comes in as inorganic, it goes to a big bloom, the oysters suck it up and deposit the stuff on the bottom. So, that's, this is one of the reasons why. But, again, even here, you know, you could see it in Wacoit, but the bloom in, in, oh, sorry, the salinity, sorry, the salinity in Wacoit was higher in 2016 by a little bit at almost every station, not so much in Poppy, probably because of the multiple river inflows. I should tell you that with the bloom, and I should have said before, but I'll say now, the most important thing to keep in mind, 2016, we were in a drought. We were coming out of a drought. 2016 had unique meteorological conditions in the bay, had unique hydrologic conditions, freshwater coming into the bay. And we're left with this question. Were those meteorological conditions which triggered the bloom, or is it just going to be just a continuing trend? And we will probably know that in a year or two from now. That's something that we're looking at under Sea Grant funding to get a handle on. I'm hoping that it has to do with the meteorology. All right? Long-term nitrogen, but you can see why Poppinassit's one of the most nutrient-loaded systems. This is the threshold, TMDL threshold for Poppinassit. It's not quite right here. It's up a little bit higher there. But, you can see the bars, which are the measurements, are way over the line. The amount of effort that the town will have to expend to get this nitrogen down is significant. It's doable, but it's significant. And the problem here really comes down to how much nitrogen we can get out before we have to just do soaring. And for this system, it's actually a fair amount of wastewater planning that has to go on and implementation. I should tell you, most systems in the region will have to have some wastewater infrastructure, even if it's only a little bit. There's very few that can duck out without anything. You can see again, though, the bloom in 2016 was massive. I mean, these are, that's the highest it ever was in the previous like 15 years or so. And we were way over that in the Mashpee River and out across the bay. So, it was a monster bloom. And what it does is it causes turbidity. You can't see the bottom. It will not allow eelgrass to recover, and all that organic matter falls to the bottom and causes some level of oxygen stress, particularly in Mashpee River, where we had some of the lowest, the lowest oxygen we've seen in the Mashpee River in, since we've been doing this. And in, also in Poppinassit Bay itself, there were lower oxygen levels than we'd ever seen since we've been here. So, it wasn't a good year. All right? But, we know why. Same thing here. To sum it up, with last year versus long-term, you see the exact same thing you saw in Wacoit. It's, was moderately bad, now it's going towards worse, moderately bad, going towards worse, things like that. It's not, it was not a great year. Means things are not great. But, over the long term, other than this one year, what do we see? Well, again, the really poor areas are starting to get better. And in Poppinassit, the moderately impacted areas are getting better. And I think that it may, these may be the result of where these are relative. This is like the Shoestring Bay, Mashpee River, places like that, where we're actually been taking steps to lower nutrient loading. The outermost portion is really sort of stable. If you average these out, it's not doing, it's not really improving or declining. So, we might be seeing something. We also, and it's not part of this program, but also for the town, we're looking in detail at the specific effects of shellfish on water quality and specific applications as a way to figure out, should the town be doing more of that? And we're working with Natural Resource on that. Rick, you are. All right, what did we find? Summarize it up. Wacoit and Poppinassit show really few more, few additional impairments compared to what they used to have, but the habitats are still impaired. Both bays had a trend of improving water quality in the poorest quality areas, which is a positive sign, but they're still not meeting their regulatory threshold levels. The tracking water quality versus the TMDL targets will be used to support that to manage, and that's fine, but they're still not meeting their TMDL targets. 2016 decline was driven by this large phytoplankton bloom. As I said, it's unclear, the event was rare, whether it's spawned by low flows, or the drought, or it's the beginning of the trend towards increased bloom frequency. We have seen large blooms before, but they haven't been frequent. Upper Quasnet River was relatively fresh in 14 through 16, the last three years. And that's the continuing trend of prior years. This study that we did with the towns didn't find any major restrictions, which was one of the major questions that drove that study being done. Also, it asked the question, can we, what areas in the Quasnet, could you grow shellfish? And it answered that. The upper regions, you can't. The lower regions, you can. The upper regions, they actually die. And it's actually a two-layer system with freshwater on top, saltwater on the bottom. If you go up the estuary and put them on the bottom, they grow. If you raise them to the top, they die. So, you know, we now know, we've mapped that all out. And if anything, you might get a little bit from dredging a channel at the inlet, but you're not going to get a huge improvement in the system. What I didn't put up here, the one thing that is happening in the Quasnet, the uppermost part of the Quasnet is a monstrous nitrogen sink. Nitrogen comes in from the watershed. It does not leave that system. And we've found that it, what happens is it comes out of the river, causes phytoplankton blooms, falls to the bottom, and actually does not return to the water column. It's not regenerative. It's denitrified. So, it's one of the few places we've found in the region that that's the case. So, what we don't want to do is dredge those sediments. We want to leave that alone, because that's like having a free treatment plan. And finally, particulate matter in the water column that you see is not imported. It's phytoplankton, and it's growing there because the nitrogen's there, and it's causing the, when it grows, it reduces water clarity, it reduces oxygen. But, if we can lower nitrogen levels, it should reverse, because we've proven that it works one way, then reversing it should go the other way. Sort of like, eat too much, I get fat. If I stop eating, I should lose weight. That kind of thing. And the monitoring program now, really now, right now, is now becoming sufficiently robust to be able to detect changes, even small changes within the estuaries, as we do implementation of management alternatives. In the past, natural variation obscured the detection of year-to-year changes, but monitoring over the long term, we now have the data to look at, and we can see the trends, and we can start making real trend analysis. And the good news is, this is just in time for the town to start implementing its, will be starting, doing its nitrogen mitigation. And we're all ready, you know, like a catcher, ready to determine if that mitigation is working. Okay? And that's it. Nothing happens here without the volunteers. You can't thank them enough. They go out there, they do it, they don't complain, at least not to me, probably to Don. But, also, special thanks to Don, to Chuckie Green from the tribe. Rick York has done a great job for the town, Sarah in my group, and then John West, who does the extra burden of being Wacoit Bay's coordinator. That's it.
Thank you.
Brian, a couple of questions. I'm more familiar with the Mashpee River. It's basically, it's at my back door. And this year, I've had the opportunity to kayak it probably a handful of times. And to myself, I'm looking at it, it looks beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
As you're paddling out. I know that beneath me, if I stick my paddle in, it goes down about a foot and a half of muck. But, from all appearances, the marsh on the sides, left and right, the grasses, the, what I call the cat and nine-tail, they're thriving and thrashing. It looks, it looks beautiful, like a pristine environment.
Yep.
But, but you're, but is it just the center pot? But, you seem to think that the eelgrass is dying in that area?
Oh, there isn't any eelgrass left in Poppinassit Bay. It's all gone. And there is some a little bit left in Wacoit. It was all gone. There's some areas where, on the east, in the Mashpee side, eastern side, you get a little eelgrass from time to time growing in Yehu Pond, which is encouraging, because it means that it's very close to being able to be restored, that pond. But, we're talking about what's in the water, which would be the fish, shellfish, habitat, and things that eat fish and shellfish.
Right. So, the upper cape, like you said, the upper part of the river is Mashpee, like this, is what I know. Does it, is that something that you could dredge, the spoils that are on the bottom of that and create a better flow? I'm sure that would help.
We've tried, we've tried a variety of things with attempts to dredge the Mashpee River, but there's no place, we haven't been able to find a good place to get rid of the material, the spoil. It's very, very expensive to get rid of. But, now we're working with Marsfield Clean Water Trust. We're going to start trying to experiment with thin, it's called thin layer deposition. You dredge and you spray it as a thin film on the marshes. You can get rid of it. But, also, with sea level rise, it actually helps the marshes sustain themselves. That's the theory.
And the shellfish, is just too early to tell if they're having a positive impact?
I can, I can say for sure that the shellfish in the Mashpee River are helping in terms of the water clarity with the lowering nitrogen levels a bit where they are. It's not clear that there's enough of them to do it, but we've been working with Rick and the town on that specific question for a year, two summers now. And it is totally clear. We had moorings out there. We took samples of sediment. We looked for enhancement of nitrogen removal. And yeah, they are having an effect. But, it's too early to say that the effect is as big as we want them to be. And that's too early just means I'm hesitant.
I had a conversation with Rick, who's here tonight, and he said, they had placed five, 5 million shells, I think it was last year or the year before. They put 8 million seedlings in just this recently. And he said that they need somewhere upwards of 20 million in to have a real effect.
Rick has a view, I mean, this is the, it should be encouraged. His view is he thinks he can get enough filter feeders in there, shellfish in there, to not have to do, to have a significant reduction in any wastewater infrastructure. And I think that's a good thing. But, what we're trying to figure out is, would, will that work? And then, there's other regulatory problems, and there's other just commonsensical problems is, if you have a single species system and it gets sick, gets a shellfish disease, then what do you do? There's ways to handle that. Okay? So, I'm not, I'm not negative on the use of shellfish at this point. We don't know enough. Everything I'm seeing is actually relatively positive, but it depends where you put them and how you put them.
Would you say if the 20 million shellfish all survive and do well, that you won't need any sewer-ing to get the water, to get Poppinassit Bay back to standard?
I didn't look at, I wouldn't say that. But, I didn't, I didn't look at Rick's, check Rick's numbers. Numbers are pretty clear. Usually, you know, I've given him the individual oyster numbers, and those, if you use those, then that would be right. The problem is, if you put them all in the Mashpee River, it doesn't help Shoestring Bay. So, it depends where you put them. But, of course, they're building a reef in Shoestring Bay. The tribe's working on this as well. So, water's for everybody, so it's a good thing.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't want to do the audience, do you? Do you want to do the audience?
No. Maybe you can have a conversation before he's leaving.
Just let me steal my-
Thanks. Bye. Okay. Okay. We have, under new business, we have appointments to the Waterways Commission. We have two applicants.
Are we voting on the both of them to be appointed?
No, just one. We have one position, we have two applicants.
So, we have to pick.
Yeah. And there was, there was no applicant, recommendation from the committee.
Well, the recommendation does have a procedural flaw.
So, do we just have to make a motion for a candidate and then?
Decide which one.
I'd like to, I'd like to motion for appointment to the Waterways Commission for Stephen Moan.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call?
Yes.
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 Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Moan.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Request to change.
The next one, we have the, we'll go to the Dev Damy. We have a-
She's there.
Dev, if you'd like to come up and present your reasoning. So, the relocation of the polling place.
So, with the renovation project set to begin in April, it's necessary for us to move out of the Quasnet School because they need the gymnasium for classroom space. So, this is, this is a subject that I've been looking at for 20 years as the town clerk. And there's really, we don't have a lot of landmass, you know, like Falmouth or Barnstable, where we can have places all over the place. We are kind of, you know, required to stay in one area, which could cause confusion if we were to set up polling places like at the Council on Aging, the library. We'd have to use the town hall.
Debbie, what is your suggestion? I'm sure you figured it out by now.
The Great Room at Christ the King.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. It has, I was just up there a little while ago. It has great, has enough room to host all five precincts. The parking is huge, and it has great parking for handicaps.
I make a motion that we temporarily for this year have the voting at the Great Hall at Christ the King.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Ask a question, then. Just, if we're, one of the issues with this is sending notice to people. So, are we going to have the notice going to say, we're changing the polling place?
I take it the clerk will take care of all of that.
I guess what I'm saying is if it's a, just, your motion was to do it for this year. So, if we, I guess my question to you is, if we do it there this year and you send out a notice, and we decide just to leave it there, do you have to re-notice it because we sent it out just for the one year? Or, you word it in a way that it's changed?
We'll just word it in such a way that-
I just don't want to, if we're going to leave it there, I just don't want to have to do more than one notice.
I, I-
That's all, so.
Let's move, well, this election's, I-
We are scheduled, if the board approves it, we will insert it into the census forms to save the town.
I make a motion, we move the election to-
We're polling place, so, to the church. And then, if we change it, we change it.
Yeah.
I just don't want a procedural issue.
Has the church already approved going forward, or is it just this one time at this point?
Nope. They're amenable to us coming in and using the facility.
Going forward.
Mr. Chair?
Right.
I just want to make the board aware that town council has discussed this with this office, and he has confirmed that the property owned by a religious organization or entity, including a church, church hall, schools, synagogue, et cetera, may legally be utilized by the town as a- by the town as a polling place. And I just wanted to get that on the record.
Good to know. All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Makes sense. Thank you.
Well, that, Deb, thank you. Good job.
Thanks, Deb.
We have a discussion for the approval of 43, 40B housing letters.
Veteran's speech. Veteran's speech pass.
Oh, sorry. I jumped right by the veteran's speech. You sat up there all that time. We're so patient. So, nice work on this, very good display. If you'd like to step up to the podium and.
My name is Larry Cron. I live at Southport. And I have a lot of time. I'm a professional artist, and I'm thinking all the time. And we have an extraordinary amount of veterans, Second World War veterans that are still living. And I thought, being a resident of Mashpee, we could come up with something better than anyone ever thought of, is to give the veterans that are living, all the veterans, the ones coming out of the current wars, something to come back to, that we appreciate them. So starting here in Mashpee, I thought that if we had a program where they could prove they're veterans with a DD 214 release from the military or identification card, we would issue them a lifetime pass to all our beaches and our lakes. And that's what that's all about right there.
That's a great idea.
And say, thank you for your service.
Great idea. Absolutely great idea. Love it. Any other questions? I'm looking for a motion.
I have one thing on it, which I saw this before I brought up, is a veteran must be a taxpayer of Mashpee. I think the easier way around that is a veteran should be a registered voter of Mashpee because if he's a renter or.
It's a good idea.
That's good, good change.
Good one.
Okay. So that, we'll have that approved when?
You're saying registered voter.
If you're a registered voter.
Registered voter.
Because you could be a renter.
That's right. You can come from another state.
Or taxpayer.
Registered voter. That way.
Yes, because someone from New York could come here and pay the taxes but not live here, really. I like that idea.
Okay. You're happy with that?
I am.
You know what? If you get extra people registered to vote, all the better.
Yeah.
Right. Go point.
And make a motion to approve the veteran's speech. Pass.
Second.
To a registered voters.
So, all right. Any further discussion? Nope. Seeing none, roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And thank you.
Yes.
Very, great job.
Great job.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we can jump to number four.
I also want to just say thank you to the Assistant Town Manager, because he worked with Larry on this project, and they did great, great work.
The discussion and approval of the 40B housing letters.
Does this matter to you tonight?
Are you going to bring this up and leave off?
Yeah. We just had some information that was brought to our attention just prior to the meeting, literally, hand-delivered to me here. And there are a number of outstanding issues that remain to be completed at the Center Street property. And so I think that this needs to go back to the housing, and we need to have some of these issues addressed and get there, input on this before this board would move to approve this. So I'd like to postpone this decision until another date, till when we can get that information and get it resolved.
Need a motion for that?
Table?
Table it, yes.
Motion to table?
Second.
Chair.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we have a discussion and approval of Pampasipay, Antemiscible.
If I could, Mr. Chair, what I would request, if the board so desires, is approval conditional, authorizing me to sign this conditional upon each town passing this prior to us, and also the Sewer Commission recommending this by an official vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? I had a couple of questions. And Andrew, you're probably more familiar with this. I didn't get this until this afternoon, the, an overlook at the agreement. And I was a little concerned with the timeline. Once we enter into this agreement, does this clock start ticking on us to the implementation of this agreement? I see it on the third page, and the third paragraph, where it comes down to Mashpee will implement its plan in five-year blocks in accordance with the approval of CWMP, the town of Mashpee of Sandwich and Bassable.
All it does, Mr. Chair, is take the plan that we already have submitted and had approved by the county and state, which presents our action plan in five-year blocks, and just says we're going to adhere to the plan that we did.
And there's no implementation date on this?
There's not a date when the clock starts ticking. The idea is that we go in and apply for a permit from DEP. That would give us the framework under which we'd be implementing our plan. So for example, right now, if we are implementing our shellfish rule program, and we're going to get, you know, certain nitrogen reduction out of that, we don't have a permit that gives us legal credit towards achieving progress towards that red line that Brian showed as the threshold. And so we're vulnerable to administrative action by the agency saying, hey, the only way for you guys to cut the load is to sewer it. This permit would let us go in and say, you're going to give us credit for all this money-saving shellfish that we're doing, so that our residents aren't going to be forced by the state or the federal government, or by a lawsuit from a third party, to implement the most expensive option. So the clock wouldn't start tolling until we got that permit sometime in the future.
But that's when, when the permit is issued, that's when the clock would stop.
That's when the clock starts, and it begins the implementation of a program over a 20-year period, which is what our plan calls for. This imposes no new obligations on the town beyond what it's already told the world that it plans to do. What it does do is it gets an agreement from Barnstable and Sandwich to take one-third, collectively one-third of the responsibility off our back.
But it's not, it's not split equally financially, because we own the majority of the.
We own the majority. We contribute the majority of the load.
I think it's roughly 80%, somewhere around 80%.
Yeah, 68%, I thought, by memory. So we're getting, right now, we own the problem because we own the bay. And we're getting the two other towns to agree to contribute an equitable share to cover their cost of what they impact the bay, which we don't have right now. It's a big boon to Mashpee.
Yeah, no, I remember that being an issue.
Right.
When I was on the.
This would represent the first agreement of its kind on the Cape, where three towns come, more than one town, two towns that don't own the bay, basically, agree to help the town that does be the main beneficiary pay for its cost.
Well, that's a start, because I guess sooner rather than later, we're going to have to find someone to drive this whole program, because we don't have anybody to take this project under hand and start to move with it, so.
But the beauty of this agreement, because it's assignable, is that if we choose, and manager and I have had our disagreement about this, if we choose to provide, to shift our responsibility to another entity, this locks down the plan. So it takes away the question about, well, what is it that you're passing off to somebody else to implement? So this doesn't obligate you to do it, but it locks down the framework. And so it prevents you from going back to another 10-year planning period where nothing happens, but the water gets worse.
Well, I guess that's one of my concerns, is that once the clock starts ticking, we're committed, you know? And it's, that was only my concern.
At some point, we have to start dealing with this. You couldn't have heard more today about how bad our water quality is. So we have a moral, ethical, and legal obligation for the benefit of the community to start to deal with this issue. And this is the first baby step towards getting us to dealing with it.
Now, we knew we needed it anyway. All right, I have a first and a second. Any further?
And this has been reviewed by legal counsel with, for content, and minor changes.
I have a first and a second. I'm looking for a motion. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep. Roll call. To enter into the.
To authorize me to sign on the condition that the other two, that the other two, that the other two towns sign, and the Water Commission approves.
Sewer.
I mean, did I say water?
Rodney, not yet. Get ahead of yourself.
I was ahead of myself.
You're already ahead of me. Don't get ahead of yourself.
Did I make one comment or not?
It's not, it's not a public forum on any of this, Joe. And the motion's been made and approved, passed and approved.
It's not negative at all.
I know. No, I'm going to, I'm going to hold off on that, Joe, but thanks. And we have a discussion and approval of moratorium of understanding between the town of Mashpee and the town of Hawech, and that was just handed to me, and I haven't even read it. So I'd like to postpone any decision on this to a later date. I don't know where everybody else stands on that, but that would be my recommendation.
I make a motion.
Is there any reason?
I heard, I heard earlier, the Assistant Town Manager did it. It's, I think with the explanation, you might, do you want?
Is there any reason to consider, to not table this and make a decision?
It's no big deal, that's why.
In a short version, which I know Selectman Kayle enjoys, this was about the legal title to a pump forestry unit, to Hawech, in consideration for their use. And it was originally sent over an MOU form, and we have since revised it with our council, who is satisfied under the procurement laws. This can be authorized if the board chooses to allow me to do it.
So we're giving them?
Use of or?
Legal title.
Legal title.
Some equipment, and they're going to provide mutual aid? Is the deal? And we don't need the equipment anymore?
That's what we're being told by the par chief.
Okay.
That's why I say it's no big deal.
It's just a swap, right. And it's approved by our fire department, right?
I make a motion, we approve the MOU.
A second.
All right.
That's all right, Mr. Chair. I know you wanted to hold it, but it doesn't.
I'm okay with it. I never, like, anything dropped off my lap at the last night.
This is what I've seen.
Right. Exactly, exactly. And that's what.
I asked this afternoon. That's the only reason. I knew it, and it was insignificant.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 And we have a Selectman representative to the Capital Improvement Program Committee. I know, I think, Andrew, you had been on.
I've done it the last couple of years. I'm willing to continue to do it, unless somebody wants to wrestle for it.
We just didn't know anybody listed.
That's chairman's choice.
Yeah. And actually, you know, it's right up my alley, and I haven't been involved with any of the committees on building. And I'd really like to jump on this one and just have some participation on the capital improvements.
Okay, I make a motion to.
You don't have to.
Okay, so it's a motion.
Chairman appoints someone. Let it be known.
Might as well exercise my capabilities on that one. I'll take that one over. And.
They meet quite a bit, you know.
I know. But it's only towards the end of the year, and then I think it slows down. We have the Water Selectment Meeting scheduled just for January. I don't know if anybody has a conflict on anything on that.
Adjust accordingly, it's fine.
Yeah. Everything looks good.
Looks good.
It's January through June.
Right. The April, that's the week after April vacation, I believe. So that's, should be good.
All right, so we get approval on that?
Make a motion, we approve the meeting schedule.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
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 That's it? Liaison reports, if any?
The only thing I have is the drop-in night at the Health Center is still going very strong. Matter of fact, it gets stronger and stronger, more and more participants of organizations. It seems to be that we should pick the real winner out, and a very helpful thing for the town with that one.
Yeah, great, great, great leadership, great participation. You're absolutely right on that one.
And I had a very good meeting with the economic development. And on Tuesday, we had a guest speaker come in. Wayne had arranged it for me to have Steve Johnson come in. And Tom, you were there for a little bit of it, to talk to us about Open Cape. And they are here in Mashpee and ready to go. And this is great for a lot of our businesses. Their high-speed fiber optics will benefit a lot of businesses in town.
Right. High-speed internet is available on Cape Cod. It's spreading.
I had, someone asked me yesterday, how do they get in touch with them?
It's on their website.
It's Open Cape.
Open Cape.
Open Cape, Darkov.
Yes, dot org. We're setting up a meeting with the chamber in the businesses after the first of the year to have him come back in and speak to the businesses.
Yeah. Everybody's very, I guess it's a little expensive to hook up, but the speed and the ability of the system is fiber optic.
It was just very interesting to listen to him talk about it.
Really is. Yeah. And it's rolling, rolling very fast. John?
Actually, two things. One is, I'm attending the last of the series for the Housing Institute next Wednesday, this Wednesday, in two days. It's actually been very informative, and there's been, it's a pretty much packed house every evening, so.
Heard good things about it.
Yeah, it's been, it was very good. Very informative. I also just had a follow-up as far as additional topics. I was just curious if we could get an update, maybe for the next meeting or at some point, if possible, as far as when we voted down the one-day passes in John's Pond and all that, if there was any results from that or any feedback, if there was any such feedback to be had.
There is feedback, both positive and negative.
Okay.
Put it on our next agenda.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I'd be just curious.
Update for their next agenda. Andrew, do you have anything that you wanted to?
Do not.
And the last thing I'll bring it up is Wayne and I both attended the Affordable Housing Committee last week, and 950 Falmouth Road. And they were asked to come back with four plans on housing types that would be presented. They had varying amounts of units. They had big box apartment buildings, one big one, and they had in three different, split in three different pieces. And then they had others that were more in townhouse-type and spread out a little bit. And there were A, B, C, and D. And we all sat and was just trying to narrow it down to bring it to the board here to make it easier for us to make a decision. And Wayne and I both thought that, and the rest of the committee, the whole committee as a whole, was, it was B and C, which was more of, it was not the most units that we could squeeze in. There were some aesthetics that really made it look more Cape Cod-ish, rather than just a big square building. And so you're going to lose some units, but clearly a better fit.
For the area.
Yeah, aesthetics-wise. So, and I think we'll be bringing those forward to the board, maybe, maybe next meeting. So, but that's it. That's all I have.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.